Y'all want to say the pledge?
Yeah.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Yeah, let me turn those down again.
So it isn't just me?
No.
It's better down here than it is there.
How's that sound? Is that better?
That's better.
Okay.
Um, you get roll call?
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Ms. Horton?
Please.
Mr. Porter?
Here.
And Mr. Guy.
Here.
And you can stop following there because that's where we need to start and I can, I can help you out from here.
Do, do I know?
I said you can stop following this thing from there because a lot of cases and everything else.
Do we need a motion to approve the agenda?
Sure.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All right. Uh, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ms. Horton?
Yes.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
Mr. Guy?
Yes.
And Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Well, I won't try and keep you guys here too long. I wanted to get touch base. It's been a few months since we got back together. We need some minutes to approve. And a couple of other things. Um, back in January, I think we approved the 2025 calendar and we thought we had, thought, thought we had it good. Um, the problem is we had a case that was filed uh for a straight rezoning and I went to send it to RPCC and our closing date overlapped their, they're sending it to the board date. So we're refined on meetings, but we couldn't get it in for them to get it to the board. So it pushed us back until April. That's a case I'll go over with you here in a little bit. So what we've done on our closing dates is um adjust those back a week. So we won't run into that problem anymore. And that's what you have in your, in your packet there with the new dates that Melissa put together. So uh basically everything on our closing dates are moved back a week from what they were before. So I just wanted to, to make you aware of that. Uh, that'll be the official new um calendar for the zoning commission.
The closing date is basically when the applicant has had the application in so you can publish it in time for the meeting.
Yes. We, we have plenty of time to publish. It's just getting it to RPCC for the ones that have to go.
Right.
And on that note, um, the state of Ohio passed a bill that's really going to help us out with publishing. We don't have to, as of March third, don't have to publish in a newspaper of general circulation anymore. We can now publish our website and social media site. So not only is that going to make it easier for us to publish and not have to worry about paper dates, but it also um will save us tons and tons of money. It costs a lot to advertise that stuff. I think we spend around what fifteen thousand dollars a year publishing? So uh saves the townships a bunch of money. And that goes for all the things that need to be advertised for townships. They changed it. It's a very big omnibus bill that went before um the lawmakers and then signed by the government uh that changed a lot of those things. So like finance department has to advertise like when their budget's available for review, that can now be done. We're working on getting a page on our website that specifically legal notices. So the people can go there, see the legal notices, and then actually get those pushouts for those. So they get notified when a new legal notice comes online. Now we're just trying to work out those final kinks in it. But uh, so if no, if no one has a problem with those uh with the changing of those dates, then uh.
Did we, are those like the first Thursday or did they move?
The meeting dates did not change. Just the closing date.
The July meeting changed, I think, cause that was right, the fault on the.
Yeah, we had that fixed before. Uh, we fixed the January, not, the January second one got moved to January ninth.
Yeah.
And then the July one moved from like the fifth to the, or the, or the third to the tenth.
Yeah, okay.
So, just to avoid those holidays and, and issues like we had last year.
Yes.
Everybody good with that?
Yep.
All right.
No issues.
The uh reorganizational items, uh, they, we, we all, the, the board decided to, you know, have Anne return his chair and then de facto made Jim kind of serving his chair in her absence because he wasn't here to defend himself. So uh.
I gave him forewarning.
Yeah. Um, so with that being said, we kind of tabled the rest of that back in January. Um, just because I think the, the meeting was running a little long and everything with Russ Research. So um, just wanted to know if you had any other reorganizational items? One of, the reason why the uh, what is the actual title here? So the hearing, zoning commission and trustee hearing guidelines were in there was to see if you guys wanted any changes.
I have one thing I would like to.
Absolutely. Thank you.
I don't know. Do we have those uh, I don't think we have that paper with, in the reorganization? Anyway, basically, I'm still, I'm falling back on previous times. I know we had this discussion before and I still, still feel that all members should be up there with us, whether they're alternate or they're a board member and have full say, but not a vote unless the alternates would have discussion unlimited, just as the board does. But only vote if they are needed. And my understanding is from what I've gleaned from the work sessions we had with the trustees, I may have the suggestion, but I mean, we can run our meetings the way we want to run our meetings. I mean, we're not under any legal obligation from the zoning or the trustees. So that's what I would like to see happen. Cause I mean, just in this instance, Jim is an alternate. If we're hearing a case, say we had a case last month and then Anne can't be here, Jim doesn't have, and then he becomes the chair and we've already closed our discussion on it and postponed or.
Tabled it.
Tabled it to the next meeting. What do we do? I mean, now we've got a board member voting that really had no discussion in it. So I think, you know, it's very simple to introduce to the public when we have a meeting that.
Our alternate member.
Our alternate members are here. They will have full say and discussion, but they will not have a vote unless the full board isn't here. I don't, that's the way all of us came into this, except Mr. Hill. I mean, they seem to change it. Um, and I, I'm not real sure what the reason is. There were comments about undue influence, but I don't, you know. Being to a several trustee meetings, I mean, I think that's a kind of a deaf point because there's definitely a, an alpha in the trustee, the trustees, uh, as far, and they're only a three-member board. Um, so I would make a motion to include all members of the zoning board, including alternates to sit up with us.
Remind me, where is that documented at and who?
That was when we had that meeting.
That was that.
They invited us to sign that paper.
No, but, no, but I'm saying, is it in?
It's in the zoning code.
It's in the. It's in the.
That's why I said I didn't have that paper with me. Pardon?
Did they put it in the zoning code?
I don't think it's in the code.
No, I don't think it's in the code.
They worked in the code. They made us, that was that.
The policy thing. Yeah.
Let me see if I can find that uh board policy.
Rick has it here, I guess. Is that it?
Yeah, I think so.
I don't know. I still don't.
So what's the authority behind that policy?
That's what my question is. You know, they say, you know, we're a volunteer board. I mean, they can run their meetings the way they want to run their meetings and, and I have serious questions about the way they run their meetings. You know, he opens it up, the trustees open it up to the public before the trustees even discuss the case. Public has a chance to say they're a thing. Then the trustees start discussing it. Public's closed. They can't question the trustees. Like, wait, wait, what, what's that? Why are you doing this? Yeah. But I mean, it's just a little back ass backwards as far as I'm concerned. I mean, to have, okay, we're open for the public to say anything you want. Now here's our case. Sorry, you can't talk. The public portion's closed. I mean, I just think the way we all came in, except for Jim, I mean.
I wasn't, I wasn't an alternate either, so.
Oh, you came in as full board member?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, when I was an alternate, I mean, Ed was asking, what do you, you know, I'm like, oh, wasn't.
So that's been sort of a, of a past practice for us then?
Yeah, it was a good way.
That's been a past practice.
Yeah, for years. I mean, this just changed.
It was a good way too for someone who's an alternate with usually a ton of.
And as far as recruiting alternates too, I mean, who wants to be an alternate if you can't say anything?
Can't say anything. Like, what's the point?
You know, call me when there's an opening, I guess. If I only have three minutes to speak and I'm an alternate board member, it just doesn't make sense.
Well, the whole point of an alternate is to be in.
In a position to vote. So, that's my two cents.
Yeah, I'm supportive of that. I'm just not, personally, I'm just not in for having another argument and debate with the people who think that they're running this. And if they really do have the authority to run this with the policy, then I'm asking myself, are we just going to do this and ignore the policy? And maybe that's okay? I don't know.
Well, and that's the thing. I've, I've heard several of them say, you know, you can run the meetings the way you want. So.
Then what good is this policy?
Well, that's what I've been saying. That's why, I don't think it's any good as far as us, cause we're not employees.
I'm trying to find it, but I think that what the loophole said was that the chairperson could define what the zoning commission's policy was. I think that, I think that was the quote loophole that we uncovered.
Well, we'll just have to wait for Anne to get back. I, I, I mean, that's just my thinking. Uh, it just makes more sense to have all alternates up with us and.
The problem is that they're running into, where the board, where the, I have no doubt that it was, that was brought to the zoning commission after all these years because of Jim's influence or not influence. Jim's.
Contributions.
Contributions. Um, the BZA does not run like that. So the alternate either doesn't show up or they, they do show up. They sit in the audience and. So the BZA was running it one way. Zoning Commission was running it another. Really contributing.
BZA needs to come around to our thinking then.
It also gets back to your point then. You leave it up to the, the board.
The board. That's why I say, I mean, they, they can run their meeting the way they want. We're an independent recommending board as far as I'm concerned. I mean, we make recommendations to the trustees, but how we get to those recommendations shouldn't be trustees dictated. Dictated.
That whole thing was, you guys had that whole kind of hash out session and everything, you know, prior to me getting here. And the only thing that I don't know is if there was a, if Dawn had anything that she threw out as a legal argument. I don't know that.
Let me ask, let me ask this if I could. I think I was the only one that got up and walked out.
I heard, yeah.
Yeah. Did anybody else sign?
Just me. All it said was.
So you're, so you're bound by it. We're not.
No, supposedly the, the signature one.
You received it.
You acknowledged it.
That's all it says. It says you know.
Which basically they could say, look, you signed this. You agreed with it. So I don't, I don't think that's true, but.
It all it said was that I've got a copy of it. So it's a.
It's like personnel policy.
Right.
Right.
I think you read it.
Handbook. And I, you know, and I question whether the, the township employee handbook applies to us since we're not employees of the township. I mean, we've gone over that. I mean, I understand.
I recommend we maybe bring this back up when Anne is in and then.
That, that's fine.
I don't know what our options are frankly.
And in the meantime, I'll, I'll see if there's any legal guardrails that have anything to do with it.
Cause it's just so confusing. It's so much more confusing to the public the way it is now. You know, if an alternate would be called, then they, to explain to them what's going on.
I know that there's legal guardrails that says, like you said earlier, when it comes time to vote, there's only a five vote and all that kind of stuff. Got all that. But I don't know if there's anything that says specifically that they can't participate. I don't know of any.
Yeah, I, I don't know of any. And I, you know, they did that way for since inception until last year.
Well, okay. Um, the way this all came about was I came on as an alternate. I was not told I was going to be an alternate until my meeting with your predecessor. And I was not particularly happy about that because, I mean, he kind of pushed on me to, to do this. But I said, fine. And he said, you'll have a full voice. You just won't have a vote unless somebody's missing. And then when somebody leaves, you'll ascend to their position. Okay, I'll do that. Um, I came out hot on the land use plan. And I think it kind of sent the room reeling. Um, I got more calls the next day than I've gotten in the last year. Deborah Wallace made it perfectly clear to Anne that they were changing the policy because of me. Now, I'm not going to let ego enter into this. It could have been any outspoken alternate. And why would you want to be an alternate? I mean, how are you going to recruit the next alternate? And I'm not sure, Rick, I, I, I was under the impression BZA did it like we did it, but you could be absolutely right. I don't, I don't know the answer.
That's just what they said in the meeting.
That's what they said in the meeting then.
The meeting, it said there, but every round meetings and when they do, it's like, you know, there's.
So far in my experience with the BZA, that's how it's worked with them. That they alternate only kind of comes in when, when they know there's going to be a, a vacancy or an absence.
So they don't even physically show up virtually or otherwise?
Yeah.
We never run that way.
I, I, I'm just saying that's how they do it.
Right. So in that meeting, the, with the BZA and the trustees, the hot button for the BZA was, why are we all just hearing about this for the first time? You know, there are committees. Why didn't they come to us and say, what do you think about this? Is this a good thing? Is this a bad thing? It just needed. And that was, that was really a sore spot for the BZA. And you know, in retrospect, I get that. I mean, I, I don't know. We're volunteers. We shouldn't be treated like this. And I think we should have had some say. I would personally like to see them reopen the issue of the policy. So we don't have this rub, you know, we're doing it one way even though they told us to do something else. I'd like them to revisit that. Um, at the risk of sounding ambivalent, I don't really care because I think Anne can probably reopen, I mean, can probably, let me talk as long as I want to talk. I don't really want this to be about me. I, I think it should be about the position and what Bob was saying makes sense.
Well, and what I'm hearing is as it somewhat states in the policy and, and then kind of contradicts itself is that what you're asking for is your ability as a board and the Board of Zoning Appeals' ability as a board to create their own set of rules and procedures for how they operate.
Right.
Consistent with the Ohio revised code.
Yeah, as long as it, that gets, I, yeah, I mean, you can't say, well, no, you know, fifteen people were voting and, and yeah, so.
No, I just want to go back to wait and this back up for any kind of dialogue with that group because like we've heard, they're not.
I, right here in two point six, it says that zoning commission need rules and procedures that the zoning commission will make its own rules and procedures to keep the orderly fashion and uh decorum of other public meetings and provide consistency for all cases. And Jeff, I absolutely respect.
Yeah, let's, let's follow what he just said. And let's just do it.
We just heard it.
Yeah, I mean, it's right there in the.
But if, if Anne needs to be here to bring that up.
Well, so I think if, if I could ask, just if we could look at that later, just give me time to double check legal wise and make sure we can go. I don't think there is, but I want to exhaust that resource.
Yeah.
And, and not have any argument that comes back and says otherwise later. So.
I would think that if that's the case and if that's the legal thing, I would think what would happen is Anne would call for a motion.
Yeah.
Somebody motioned, we all approved it, then Jim sits in, we can't vote.
And that, and that's now your procedure.
That's now our procedure.
Well, I could always add, and I understand there may be another alternate coming on. I don't know. Has there been an application in or something?
Uh, there's another alternate, but we had one leave the BZA.
Oh, okay.
And so um that he interviewed um with the board and he's now a BZA.
Oh, okay. I, I just heard that we possibly would have another alternate coming in.
Is it Joe?
Uh, Joe moved up to a, to a full member of the BZA.
Cool.
And uh Matt Evans is now the uh alternate to the BZA. So that gives them an alternate too.
Right. I mean, that's.
Be able to use.
I would recommend that we go ahead and if we're going to bring Jim in as an alternate and, and while in a voices of opinion, I think he needs to be sitting up there with us because I does, I do think it does get confusing with who's this guy down here who's.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure how we, how that logistically would work, but we'll try and figure that out. So.
Yeah, I mean, there's one more chair. I mean.
We'll just squeeze it in somehow.
Anne and I are little.
We'll put a red X on his name so you know, everybody knows that he can't vote.
No big A.
Like Hollywood Squares.
A big A.
Well, it's easy to explain. I mean, in most meetings, there's no one at here. But when, when somebody's presenting, by the way, this is the alternate, he will be allowed to speak, but he won't be voting.
Yep.
That's.
Yeah, I mean, that's, yeah, that's why I didn't understand that whole policy change. It was so simple the way we had it before.
We'll re, we'll revisit and see if we can get that going in the right direction.
Okay. That's all as far as the discussion that I have.
Uh, everybody okay with the, with like the form that we use for moving forward to the meeting? That seems to work well.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, meeting minute format, okay? Those are the, these are the things that are mentioned in that reorganization thing. Um, the agenda. See, that's the one. Now, now here's an issue that I've, that I've been reading through this. This is going back to this two point six, which you're reading, right? And under two point six one six, it says quorum. And this is supposed to be how the, how the, the commission runs its meeting. The numerical number of members that are needed to establish your quorum. That's laid out in the ORC. And that, that's not under your purview. That's ORC specifically. So I'm not sure why that's there. But, sorry, didn't mean to get too far off track. But uh, I mean, it definitely tells you the number of people and everything.
Yeah, and I think that was kind of an issue when uh there were the three of us here and we postponed the over case. Cause George wanted to back hurt that night. But that didn't happen. Um, you know, we did have a quorum, but as Anne stated, she didn't feel that had enough input and there was bias on the board. Uh, so we postponed it. I know he wasn't happy about it, but you know.
It went through, went, went, pardon? It went through with the stuff?
Yeah.
So there was a bias on the board that way?
That's what she had said.
Who was the bias?
You know, I think she just wanted more board members there for impact.
I, that's what I think she wanted.
Yeah.
Okay, um.
Probably in the minutes. I think those minutes are up to once.
Any other reorganizational items? Okay, great. Thank you.
Jim, you're acting cheer. You got me uh.
Oh.
Wake up.
I. No, I mean, I, I. I think you're doing a great job. Compared to where we were before you, I, I really am much more comfortable with communications, with the yeah, with, with how we get along and the interface between the staff, I think is vastly improved since you've come on board. I, I, I think we're running pretty well. I mean, I, you know, we, we deliberate. We are courteous to each other. We sometimes disagree, but generally agree on things. I think it's a good board.
I agree. Thank you. Thank you for your guys' efforts too. Appreciate it.
So you're endorsing me to stick around for another few more years?
If they'll have me.
So organizationally wise, and this is not necessarily directly or uh to it, but uh all the boards are back on track now with appointments and reappointments and everything.
I have been approved by.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I never really heard one or the other.
Sorry about that. But yeah, um, you've been approved. Um, everyone's for this year's been approved. Um, Joe Jenkins at BZA moved up to full member. Cause uh, Joe on a blank. Uh, left. He didn't re-up.
We get a new one to read. This was last revising.
Yes. And probably what you're going to end up with, we have this, which is, let me bring it up here. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm over here. This mouse is super sensitive, so I apologize. Really super sensitive. So this is a, there's a full version of the contact list, but this is now kind of where we're at for everything else. Um, so now we, we know who's where. So this is who expired in twenty twenty five. Um, John Thomas is the one leaving the BZA. Joe Jenkins is moving up. So this, this will get revised. Uh, one of the things that I, I talked with Mr. Rushing, the administrator about it, every year at the trustees reorganizational meeting on the first one in January, this will be presented to them so they know who's up for reappointments, how they want to do it. A, a letter, or so next year on, Kristen, you'll be contacted by me to say, hey, you want to continue on and you'll let me know one way or the other and we'll get to this much earlier. The other thing that we're going to work on is changing everybody's expiration date to four one of whatever year. So that way it's consistent. It's kind of been all over the place.
When you came on was your anniversary day.
Yeah, so uh, and then sometimes they appointed people to fill someone else's term, but they did a five-year appointment when it should be, let's say you leave tomorrow. It should be to fill your unexpired term. So we've got it all tracked out better now, ready to go. And then uh, Mrs. Horton, your thing about contacts. Melissa's done a fantastic job of creating the zoning contact sheet. Um, she's reorganized it. She's even got it tabbed out down here by, so we can go to just BZA just so. She's super efficient. Um, oh, a question for you. Did you get a chance to decipher township email?
I have not. Cause I didn't know if I.
Please, you're in. Now do it.
I'll have to go back through my emails and get that link that.
I can resend it to you.
Yeah, do that.
Uh, I'll send it till Monday. I'm actually off tomorrow. So.
Is everybody else on it? I mean, are we?
Yeah.
Except Anne.
Nan and Antonin.
She's not getting them.
Well, she said she had it fixed, so.
Oh, when did you talk to?
This was back.
Cause I had to send her this, the agenda for tonight. Cause I saw that it went to Anne Salter, Beaver Creek dot orders. I don't think she set it up. Cause she had big concern with her right state stuff and.
Yeah, and being able to.
Yeah, she, I signed her from her. She got that worked out.
Oh, yeah, you might have to double check.
Yeah, I'll double, I'll double check with her, but.
Cause I think that's why she contacted you about the agenda for tonight. I'm glad it.
Alright, so you, you're going to get rid of all those other email addresses then?
Yes. When, when everybody was on and signed up, they're going away. And so like how we've been able to do this now, when we send an email, we're copying this Beaver Creek Township one. And then the only other one that we're copying right now is, is you. Um, and then the B, the BZA still has some work to, to get caught up with that. So you guys aren't the only one. But uh, yeah, she's done a fantastic job of putting this together so that we're able to use it.
So can you get us, once that's cleaned up, can you get us a copy of that or just?
Yeah.
Or is it, or is that something we have access to?
Uh, we can send it. We got a copy of it. We can send it to you digitally if you like it.
If you don't mind.
It's an Excel file.
Yep.
So, yeah.
I know how to spell Excel.
Uh, sometimes I don't. That's why I give everything to her proof. So uh, yeah, so that's what we, what Melissa, Melissa's been working on. But this is the one that's kind of the one that we're giving to the trustees. Or, you know, it's consistent, it's concise. It doesn't have all the other stuff on there.
Makes sense.
And everybody knows that they're going to update that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Perfect. Um, okay, I think that addresses all the reorganization items. Zoning code changes for twenty twenty five. Going through the Russ Research case, it kind of exposed some flaws in our zoning code. Uh, one of the biggest flaws is definitions. Our definitions are weak and we really need to update those. So that's one of the projects that will be coming for you guys to review and, and take a look at. They're bad. I mean, we don't even, that's what I had up here. So I mean, here's an example. We were talking about office use. There's no definition of office, which there should be. It's not definitions of, of different things, but we do have a definition of a penthouse, which.
Yeah.
Who cares? You know, um, you know, for us, we're, we're not, there's some other things that, that are in here that aren't needed. Uh, and there's just, it just needs updated. So I'm working on updating that. Um, but that'll be coming before you guys at some point in time for review and, and everything else. Um, but that'll be coming before you guys at some point in time for review and, and everything else.
Will that be in like a track change version, or just here's a new one?
Probably here's a new one.
So you're not gonna see what was deleted?
Well, you'll. Yes, I'm sorry, it'll be in one of my track changes, yes, so you'll see what's been scratched out, like. Xed out, the new one being read, yes, I'm sorry. Um, so yes, that'll be one of the changes. So I'm trying to find out how to take, uh, you know, enough bites to, instead of eating the elephant all at once, to try and get some things going. So that's one that kind of relates to the second one, and I'm gonna give you guys some homework. Let's see if you understand kind of my format here. So what this is, is all the items from our use table. Um. And what I've done, what I've done on these are pulled all the uses out that fit into other category, like a general category.
This was very confusing, by the way, when I went through that.
Yes.
Cause I, I kept looking across these and it's like, it just doesn't make sense.
Yeah, like I said, it exposed some flaws in our zoning code, and, and this is one of them. So I broke them down into certain category, and I haven't done industrial yet, but these are. The first few pages are retail, eating and drinking establishments, office, indoor recreation, healthcare facilities. And. Personal services. And assembly, I started getting into a little bit of the industrial on there. So what this chart shows you is it takes all these.
What's the highlighted yellow mean?
The highlighted yellow is where it's, um, different from the other zones.
Okay.
Um. Just kind of anomalies within there. So I took all the uses out, and if you notice like this, here's the table two, and then if.
Is it C like conditional?
C is conditional. And then you go, and then you got table two A, and there's overlapping things in there. So this takes table two A, table two and table two A, and combines them, so you can see where they were permitted, conditional, or, or not allowed. And the one of the things that kind of shows up as a trend is how similar they are when you put the uses together. And, you know, and so what this does is basically take a use-based approach to the uses, instead of a specific ba- based approach to the uses. Now, some of those might need to come out, and there might be some uses in there that we wanna specifically identify. But this is just kind of the start of moving them around and getting them in an order where we can.
I'm just curious, historically, is this like something that is universally? In general following a standard, or does every county, city do their own thing and create their own from scratch?
There's kind of a, a two-way approach.
X means no to me.
Yeah, this is means it's permitted.
Well, that's why, is there any way to change that to a P?
Sure.
On the tables? I mean, just from my mind, the way it works, I'm, I'm looking at like X is like.
If I remember, if I re.
Can't do this.
If I remember how to spell Excel, I think it has a find and replace feature, so I can do that. But, uh.
Just a suggestion.
To answer your question, there's kind of, there's kind of a standard, and then, then communities go out on their own, yeah. Uh, and I, I can tell you, I, by looking at this one, kind of how it was created, oh, another use came along, we need to put it in the chart somewhere. Oh, another use came along, we need to put it in the chart somewhere. Which kind of creates just a hodgepodge of stuff running around. Because, you know, predominantly retail's retail, you know, restaurants are restaurants, and offices are offices. Um, and it would be much easier, um, to be able to say what that is and, and figure it out. Now, the homework that I want from you folks is to take a look at these in their categories and say, yep, that's a retail use, but we'd still like to split this one out. Or we, we, we still need to split that one out, or, or give your feedback on it when we're talking about this.
What does the X mean?
X means it's allowed.
Let's change it to a P or a check mark on it too, like.
I'll tell you what, I'll resend it out to you with some Ps on there.
I know, it's been in the tables forever, and it gets me every time I'm like.
I just follow the same format.
Yeah, I know, and it's just like.
But, but it got.
Just can't think outside of the box.
I can't.
So kind of I started working on definitions, and I thought, well, if I'm working on definitions, I really need to make sure the uses have the correct definitions. And so they kind of go hand in hand. And, uh, so I, I'd like to be able to work on them kind of hand in hand. And, and I'm not sure if you'll get this in, you know, June, or if you'll get this in May, you know, or, or later on this year, it's a, it's a, it's a lot. Um, but I wanted to get you, you all in the kind of process of thinking about it. And kind of getting a little bit of feedback to say, I don't know, I think you're kind of barking up the right tree or the wrong tree, you know, with how this is working.
So I like the way you've got it sort of alphabetically ordered. And I'm just wondering, in general, what, what would drive you to a specific level of specificity and, you know, retail versus a, what kind of retail?
Generally, when you're trying to work in something that you don't want, is generally what happens. Um, so let's just say that, uh, under eating and drinking establishments, that we didn't have specific adult entertainment regulations. Uh, which we did, but if we did not have those specific adult entertainment, you'd probably, you, you probably would put. Go-go bar in there as not permitted in some places that you didn't want it, that's generally what drives it.
Or gun ranges?
Another one, yeah.
You said adult entertainment is or is not?
It's not listed in here, it's in, there's specific other parts of the code where it's addressed.
As in? Not permitted, or?
Only in this neighborhood.
Right over there by the old folks home that we're building, put it in next door.
So I, did you watch Landman by the chance?
Yep. I, I agree with you, Jeff, I mean, it's hard, like woodshops, um, furriers. I mean, I, this, doesn't retail cover all of that?
Yeah.
You got all these retail things.
Well, but you can have like a vape shop that would be retail, that you may be not one of the best practice.
And that's what, that's what my point is, I mean, there's some things that'll probably get drawn back out, but if we could put in general, a retail establishment's a retail establishment.
You've got retail excluding marijuana, I assume marijuana's dealt with somewhere else in the code?
Yes, sir. So we have, here in definitions, we have adult entertainment facility. And then adult entertainment facility is listed specifically, I believe in the I-one uses. Like parking, I went too far.
Not under eating and drinking establishment?
Correct. It falls outside of that. And so what the definition would be, eating and drinking establishment would be defined, but it would then say excluding adult entertainment, because it's elsewhere, okay.
So the homework assignment is for us to noodle this and?
Yeah, just noodle, I mean, you don't have to go into a deep dive of it, you know, just kind of what you're thinking, what, what, uh. I- is it looking like it's going down the right way, um. Kind of a feedback component, I mean, I, I, I don't wanna come in here and like, here's Andy's version of how the world should be. I, I'd like it to be our version of how the world should be.
I, I guess the question I have is, you know, I'm looking at jewelry stores, I mean, clearly that would fit within retail.
Correct.
So is there a reason to have more specificity?
No.
Or a reason to have less specificity?
So what my, my premise is, or, or this starts from, I guess this is the, probably the easiest way to say it, is there's no reason to have that level of specificity.
I agree with you.
And so, but currently, we do have that level of specificity. So what I'd like to do is, is be more use-based to say, it's a jewelry store, it's a cigar shop, it's a whatever it is that, that all are all retail. And they're all fit within where retail's allowed.
So in other words, if I could play it around, have a category called retail, and then you put in parentheses all the examples of what that would include.
Yeah. Yeah, or that by definition, it is a space where goods and services are offered to the public.
Keep it very generic.
Yeah, and so that, that retail fits within that. Um, especially the real, the real telling one is the office uses, I mean, they're all like the same. And they're all, like, every one of them's permitted in the same district with a very few exceptions. Um. The, and that's the hot, the yellow ones, you know, kind of the ones that are anomalies there, but they're all the same. So there's no sense in calling, if we're gonna call all, treat all office the same and permitted everywhere, there's no sense in calling it out. So what is office? By definition, it is XXXX. And for definitions, I'm not, I'm not gonna lie to you folks, probably the, what I'm gonna use to fill in our definition is Washington Township's definition. Cause they've worked, I used to work there, worked real hard on the definitions when I was there, and they've continued to improve those definitions over time.
No reason to reinvent the wheel.
No, just borrow it from people.
Is office space on here?
Yeah, um, a few pages back. So it's gonna be the color gray. Are you colorblind? I, I know someone's colorblind. So the little categories are at the top, and I've tried to make all the colors a color, so that they're, you know, you kind of see them as you go through there.
And I assume that you rearrange this and condense it or whatever, uh. Someone comes up with some kind of new retail business that's not listed in the examples. Is that a conditional until they come to the board for approval?
So what it would be, would be, once again, that use-based look at it, to say, does it fit the definition of what a retail use is? So let's just say that, I don't know of a good example.
Yeah, I don't either, I was just trying to think of something that new comes out.
And, and that's part of the problem too, is like, when I, when I first got into zoning, you know, we were going through all this stuff because cell phone towers were just starting to become out there. And everybody was trying to regulate them, because we did not have them before.
Yeah.
Um, you know, back when, when I was little, we didn't have internet yet, you know, and so these uses come along, I'm sure there's gonna be something that comes along in twenty thirty that we've never seen before.
Right, exactly.
So how does, uh, my approach to this is how does it fit into a category than specifically calling it out a use? Which is what's been done over the years with this code. So retail, like I said, might be goods and services offered to the public at a.
Yeah.
Establishment, you know, whatever that definition of retail is, if it fits that, new business, then it fits that. If it doesn't, we'll have to have some sort of thing in here that says, these things are now conditional uses if they fall outside of that. But most of them will fall into that category.
Can you, um, state again what the highlighted ones are?
Just kind of ones that were anomalous from like, didn't fit, like, like in the office ones.
You said different before, and I'm saying, it's not that it's different.
So like, for instance, on the office one, under the B-two uses, engineering research, prototype development associated with office. That's the only one that's not permitted, it's conditional. I'm not sure why it was a conditional in the B-two. So I kind of highlighted those ones that kind of stood out as different.
Uh, okay, within each zone?
Yes.
Got it, I was, I was going across.
Yeah, no, with up and down zones.
Okay, got it.
So what about massage places? Massage places like, and I don't mean the, the happy ending ones, I mean.
You mean like, uh, massage area?
Yeah, like massage area.
So that would probably, I think there's a category in there that's personal services.
And under. Retail, personal services, a separate category.
Yeah, it's the second to the last page. So that, that would, when we get the definition of what those personal services would be, it would probably cover what that is.
Would it be there, or would it be underneath?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Doesn't look like it's fitting in those.
It would probably be under healthcare, I'm sorry, wrong thing. Wrong thing.
I was thinking health, and you were thinking something completely.
I was thinking, I was thinking a different service, I guess.
You're thinking the happy ending one.
Well, I mean, the ones that are the problems right now are these ones, are these pseudo-legitimate ones. Where like some of the human trafficking stuff was happening, and we need to get some probably specific regulations for those. Kind of like we have adult entertainment spelled out, we have marijuana, both medical and recreational spelled out. Um, we probably need to spell out some specific guidelines. Yes, sir.
So going forward?
Yes, sir.
Are we each going to individually just give you a list of comments, we gotta share it with each other, how, how do you see this going?
Well, we can't really share it with each other, so I mean, kind of just brief feedback on this, and then, then we'll make it a case. I mean, at some point in time, it'll become a case, so we don't wanna discuss what the case outside of that.
So we'll communicate with you one-on-one?
One-on-one, if you have like some comments.
And you'll, and you'll, you'll do a pot of changes?
Yeah. You know, and then kind of trying to formulate from the one-on-one, what will, what will then become what I present to you later, later date. Now, this isn't, you know, the, when you're doing this, take a look at the use table, there might be one or two that I forgot to put in here. I really haven't got, I got the assembly part of industrial, but not kind of the warehousing part of industrial done yet. Um, but what I'm hoping to do is narrow this use table that's. Stupid mouse. You know, several pages long, down to probably three or four pages long. And, you know, and on not table two and table two point one, but something.
Or you also then plan to group it the way you have yours, or?
Yes.
So back to the massage therapy, I don't see physical therapy or massage therapy specifically.
These are, these are only the uses that were in our code current, so we have not addressed them.
And this is basically, is this gonna be an appendix, or is it a cheat sheet?
Right now, it's appendix to the, to the code, you know, this is, this is strictly a cheat sheet for you guys, this, this Excel document that I put together. This is totally working document from mine, and I'm sharing with you guys.
So you're saying you're not gonna change, you're not gonna update this?
Oh, yeah, that will be, this will be updated, but that will be what the case is when we update that.
That's not an appendix, it's a table within the document.
Well, it's an appendix at the end of all of this, at the very end of our.
Oh, so what are you gonna do with all these then? That are in internally within them?
It's built into it too.
The ones that are built into the, the code ones, I, I, I have to revisit some of those.
I mean, it's gonna conflict with whatever you put.
Maybe, yeah.
The appendix, the new appendix will conflict with the actual zoning code, is what you're saying, yeah, I mean, I understand what you're saying.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to understand what you're saying.
Well, so what?
We have embedded within the code, these tables.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like page sixty-seven.
Thirteen fourteen is an example, we got table two A.
Pages thirteen and fourteen.
Sixty-seven, page sixty-seven.
Okay, sorry. I'm working on it. Like conditional uses see table two A.
Yeah.
So those references will have to change.
My, well, my version of it's been baked into the actual.
Oh, it, it's.
So maybe I have an older.
You might have an old version. Well, you guys all need new versions, I, I will make you new versions.
I don't even have a.
Melissa will make you new versions.
I don't even have a cover of this, so I don't even know.
Nineteen ninety-six.
This is the new one.
Yeah, you got an old one.
This is what was given to me.
This is the new one.
Yeah.
Sixty-seven, mine says.
Mine's ninety-six, too, well, it's been revised on twen- in twenty-one.
Yeah, that was the last major revision within twenty-one.
Right.
Yeah, mine wasn't even revised.
So do you guys have current ones?
I have current.
Yes, I have revised.
You need one? You need a current one? Or yours, okay, so you need one?
Yeah.
Okay, and I think Ann said she wanted.
Ann's never had a book at all.
Oh, well, Lord.
Never had a cup.
Well, now that answers that.
Yeah, that answers my question too.
So, yes, uh, yeah, the, that reference will be changed to whatever, but like if you go onto like the web version of this, sorry. Like when it comes down here, he clicks it, now that's the actual zoning resolution, and appendix A is the table of permitting.
Actually, if you can. Email that to me, email, email the link to me?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Pull it down, you don't need to print it.
Yeah, okay. Well, you're just gonna pull it down digitally when you wanna reference it. We'll get you a book anyway.
I see, you have to bring it with you, but.
I'm worth it?
You're worth it, yeah. I'm feeling the love, trying. So those two items at least make sense, the table of uses and the definition is a good starting place to do some, some updates to our code. So, those two items at least make sense, the table of uses and definitions is a good start in place to do some, some updates to our code.
Okay, are we at our next item, or?
I guess, if everybody's good with that.
It says additional zoning commission discussion items, is that what we just did?
No, we're doing that now, we're getting ready to do that, uh, just wanted to break you guys aware of two things. One is that case that I said got pushed off because of the RPCC. That is this backwards Italy right here, and this piece right here.
Where, where are we?
We're on Dayton Z, I'm sorry.
We're physically today, right now.
Right now, we're right here.
Right there, okay, yeah, so it's just.
Yeah, right across from Shady Lane, this is the AES facility.
Got it.
So. People bought this, um, they're wanting basically to get rid of this O one designation and make the entire thing the light industrial, like the rest of it is. Like AES did the same thing a few years back. That that O one used to go straight across there, and they got rid of that O one and made it all I one. Uh, what they're wanting to do, a road that comes down through here, that's gonna line with Shady, and do an industrial park back there.
Mind me, generically, top level, what's the difference between O one and I one?
O one's industrial, or uh, office.
Right.
And has only the office uses that are allowed, I one, yeah, is. So, pretty straightforward reason.
Surrounding by I, so there are no impact there.
Yeah.
The Shady Lane folks across the street, it's residential.
And what's, and the one that's buttered up next to the R one AA?
This one.
Residential there?
That's residential.
Yeah. So, is, uh, they bought lot one twenty seven and, is that right?
These two.
Those two, so there's a, a lot between the house, that one right there.
There's other structures on this one too, let me turn off.
Those are houses, yeah.
And what, what is that zone next to the?
Well, it looks like R O or.
It's the same.
Yeah.
It's light industrial?
There's houses there, but it's only industrial.
O one, office and industrial, there's houses.
Oops, sorry. Lot of cars.
There's probably some top level.
Yeah, some cars.
A house there, couple of barns, and a whole bunch of cars. But anyways, I just wanted to get you that awareness that that case is coming, and I have a question, let me go back.
Is that gonna be a P U D?
No, straight I one.
Straight I one, cause I noticed the space drive is a P U D.
Yeah, the other one's space drive, so this is um. A van with two seats.
And drywall.
And so, they have this lot, they built this building a few years ago, they have this lot, they wanna do an addition. Right there?
And connect the two buildings, is that?
Not connect, but just the addition to this, the one on, you see on the right, sorry, this house is. And then do a parking area that comes off Beaver Park for right there. So, they submitted this today, I talked to this guy the other day, he he dropped off a a site plane for me. And I said, well, this is kind of plane development, so it's gotta have specific site plane approval. And he's like, okay, can you send me an application for that, I did, today he just drops off the application, and all I have is the site plane. So, my question to you. Before we get into a meeting and have issues. So, that's the addition, that's the added portion, that's the only document that I have at this point in time. Is is that enough for your review, would you like to see an elevational drawing, would you, what?
We all know that won't be enough for him.
That's just when I was like.
Or what else, what other things, like, can call him and tell him, I need, I need more, do you think that we need? I think elevation, I, that's my thought right off the bat, is an elevational drawing. So.
An environmental impact.
Yeah, there's, that's it, now Ann, you're you're channeling Ann.
Trap of study.
Well, one of the recommendations that I will have on that as it moves forward will be, obviously, that they have to meet county stormwater requirements. Uh, because they're gonna be adding a pervious surface, and that's been a problem in this area.
It has been a problem, you're saying?
Yeah. So, those are the, those two items are the upcoming things that are coming your way. And then additionally, um, try and make our, uh, once we've kind of started beginning finding out about emails and everything else. I'm trying to make it so our communication works as well as it could. Um, and one of the ways that, um, Melissa had a suggestion, that when I send you out information with packets or or meetings. That additionally, that I'll send you a separate email to your, uh, you have a great township account, that's a calendar invite. And so, all you basically have to do to that is accept tentative or decline.
That was the biggest reason Ann didn't want email.
Cause of her calendar?
Is it affecting it, and it's also my personal home calendar, so I don't know if I, I don't know if I'd be okay with that.
Of having one meeting a month, so?
Well, it's just it's access to mine, so, I mean, I, that was her thing, is hers is connected to her work too, and so she, I mean, I think that is something you need to talk with Ann too here.
Well, then I need everybody to start responding to my emails when I send them out.
At least with an acknowledgement.
Yeah, just let me know, I mean, I I had, I had an idea that one person was showing up tonight, that's it. So, I I mean, I I don't.
Yeah.
I I I need that feedback, um, I I don't know any other way I can say that. So, we'll continue with the emails and no calendar invite. I mean, I can do a read receipt where you can say, send it back, that would.
What about, uh, I don't know, you guys have the capability to put like a voting button in there to say. So, you don't, you don't talk about, so sometimes you can put in an email or saying, hey, you click on, you're gonna attend or not attend, you click on. Doesn't put an invite in your calendar, they like, just sends a response back to you.
I've never done one, but I'll research it.
Yep, it's pretty standard.
Melissa sounds like she knows how to do this.
Outlook or?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's a little feature.
That way, we just click yes or no, and it sends a response back to you that.
That'd be great, that would be, that would help me tremendously. That would, that would cut down on our anxiety as far as that goes.
How many chairs to bring to this meeting?
Exactly, all right, thank you, thank you for that input, and thank you, Kristen, for letting us know about the, you know, what's uh, what's an issue.
Are we at the next? Per bullet minutes, is that?
Yes, sir.
Where we are? Okay, uh, in the packet is three sets of.
Or four.
Start from the oldest?
Unless we can do them all at once.
Or just.
The only one that I have any concerns about, if I'm gonna undertake this. There's nothing in here saying that I'm gonna be the chairperson in her absence.
Okay, on the January meeting?
The board discussed who could run a meeting at the chair's absence, but identified that a vote is not necessary, that's all.
You know, we need to specifically name.
You know what I'm talking about?
Cause that was the.
January meeting.
Yeah, it's the second last paragraph, essentially, you just put in, add another sentence to it. What do you want that to say? You said it perfectly, you wanna say it again, can you repeat yourself?
The board discussed who could run a meeting in the chair's absence, but identified their vote was not necessary, uh, Mr. Hill was appointed.
Nominated.
Nominated, appointed, drafted, indentured.
Drafted, I like that one.
Uh, other than that, you know, do I, does anybody else got anything else on the other minutes?
Good kick?
So, we would need a motion that the October, November, December, and January. Agendas, I'm sorry.
Minutes.
Be approved, uh, with January night being changed to reflect my appointment.
I think you just made the motion.
Okay. Is that good enough?
So, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Whortley?
Yeah.
Mr. Porter?
Yes.
And Mr. Grace?
Yes.
And Mr. L?
Yes.